Educating, Informing, Serving. TV, Keeping Government Honest.
Okay, 6:30. This is a meeting of the Wyndham Northeast Supervisor Union Board on Wednesday, October 19th at 6:30 PM. I am going to call this meeting to order, and I want to do a quick quorum check for Bellows Falls Union High School. Who is present here besides myself? Deb Wright, are you here?
Yes, I'm here.
Great. It's my understanding that Brenda will not be here, and I'm hopeful that Molly Bannock will be able to serve in Brenda's absence. Molly, of course, is the Chair of Bellows Falls Union High School Board. Are you here, Molly?
I am here.
That's great, thank you. For Rockingham, I believe that we will have both Jason Terry and Priscilla Lambert in the room. Am I correct in that assumption?
I'm here.
Thanks, Priscilla. Jason, nice to see you here. You're here? Okay. Will Jason Benson be able to participate tonight? I'm aware that George Smith has got a couple of days off, and he deserves them.
Yes, I am here and available.
Oh, great, okay. Appreciate that, Jason. Okay. For Union Elementary, I've already seen Cheryl Charles in the room. Jessa West Clark, are you here?
I am here.
That's wonderful. And is Lynn Morgan here?
Yes, I'm here.
Okay. We have a nine-member board with nine members here, so I think we'll get started. Superintendent Chris Pratt, do we have any adjustments to the agenda?
The only thing I would like to do is introduce our new business administrator when we start the meeting.
Okay, well, we will do that actually under communication and public comment then. There are a couple of things I would like to say. Number one, it would be hugely helpful for me if people who are speakers can have a video presence here as well. It's helpful to me not only to hear what you're saying, but be able to see what you're saying. And I realize that for some people, because of connectivity issues, that's not always the case. So if you can do it, that'd be a big help. If you can't do it, we're glad you're here. And the only adjustment that you have would be to introduce Flora Pagan to us. Is that correct, Chris?
Yes, that is.
Okay. Why don't you go ahead and introduce Flora, and then I will introduce our next speaker. Ready when you are, Chris.
Thank you. So yes, I would like to introduce Flora Pagan as our new business manager for Wyndham Northeast. She is starting her third day, and she's well underway, and she's definitely already in the thick of it. So welcome, Flora.
Thank you.
Thank you for being here, Flora.
Thank you.
You have your work cut out for you. Okay, Chris, thank you for that. I want to just very briefly discuss what we're going to do tonight. I want to remind both board members and members of the public who are here that communication and public comment is an opportunity for individuals to address matters of interest or concern to the school board. It is not an interactive discussion, although we are planning to have one a little bit later on under our Agenda Item Number Six, which is called Questions and Answers. And of course, the purpose of that is so people can ask questions and hopefully get answers. In situations where we don't have answers, we will do our best to see if we can provide those answers for our next regular WNESU meeting, which is one week from tonight on the 26th. Now, with that out of the way, I would like to introduce to you very briefly David Moll Holland, who did put in an appearance at the Union High School meeting last week, although it seems more like it was about six months ago. Lots have been happening in school. And David is a former faculty member at Albany Medical College, Director of Biostatistics, and also oversaw large epidemiological studies and health policy issues in Vermont, New York, and Maine. It's an irony that David and I have never met because we both live in Westminster West. And with a very brief introduction, David, the floor is yours, and I hope you'll be able to stick around in case we have anyone in the room who would like to pose questions to you later on in the meeting. So here we go.
Sure, sure. Can you hear me okay?
Great.
Okay, great. Thanks. I appreciate the opportunity to address the board, and I want to start my remarks here with appreciation of your individual and collective efforts to guide the Wyndham Northeast Supervisor Union and community in these unparalleled times. And boy, is that an understatement here. I'm also a member of the community, so I have skin in the game that way, and friends and family are affected not only by the virus, but by the prospects of it here. So in my remarks, I'd like to address five points here. To begin with, there's key numbers to consider. I'm sure we've heard that there's 5.6 million cases in the U.S., and now we've passed 175,000 deaths. In Vermont, there have been growing number of cases. There's four in Wyndham County in the last week. Our country rate is accelerating recently, more like the Step One concerns of different school opening plans here. And to bring that home to Wyndham County here, while nearly all deaths have occurred in Vermont in people age 60 and higher, there's a disproportionate number of younger folks, 20 to 60, the age of our faculty and staff in schools, and also among 10- to 19-year-olds there with the prevalence of the disease. They may not die, and thank goodness for that, as frequently as older people like me, but they will get it more. They're out and about more here. One of the things that I want to address along with the numbers here is a couple of general medical facts as we deal with this new normal, as we rely on self-quarantining and students having clean masks as well. First and foremost, and some of you have heard me say this before, and I'll be saying this for the far future here. Virus caused the disease, but it's humans that caused the pandemic. It's our actions and the actions that we can do to stop this. Second of all, viruses mutate person to person, so whatever virus is in our body, if we're exposed to COVID-19, is not likely to be the one that exits to the next person. This is not a China thing. It's not a Europe thing. It's something that we are capable of harboring, helping to evolve and move on to the next persons. So it's really important that we address those asymptomatic people in whatever we do, and the greatest exposure is from those people, and they're hard to count. Second is critical in our planning individually and collectively to address some myths. One I want to go through and hopefully lay to rest is the idea of herd immunity. Herd immunity is a postmortem label to try to explain why some of the herd survive. Okay? It's a postmortem label. The reality is that responsible ranchers and farmers, when they see serious disease, mad cow disease, certain swine and aviary flu, for the good of their neighbors and their neighbor's livestock, they destroy their own, and they help make others safe. If we want to go the herd immunity route, the medicine, the medical truth behind it is that 60% to 90% of us would have to become infected. That would be in Wyndham County, over 25,000 people, and we'd have conservative numbers, and conservatively 750 deaths. So we don't want to go that route. And in non-COVID times, we would equally act quickly to try to eradicate any disease. We have two tools that are at our disposal, time and distance. We don't have to rush a thing, and we don't have to rush getting together. Those are things that are tools that we know that are effective in addition to washing hands, to wearing clean masks here. How do we know our children are going to have clean masks? And then, thirdly, there's a big problem that we have each year, and that's what we call flu season. There is no such thing as the flu. There are a variety of viruses that will be out there, and there may be some spillover benefits and problems with the flu here. So certainly would advise getting flu shots if you can tolerate them. The biggest thing, the biggest challenge for us as a community and for schools, if we contract the flu, that will weaken our immune systems and make us more susceptible to COVID-19, where we might otherwise have not contracted it. So it is very serious in that regard. Also, it's very possible, likely, that individuals will say, "Oh, I just have the flu," and/or the doc, you know, would lie and say, "Oh, the doctor checked me, and I'm fine. It's just the flu." Well, just the flu is a series of similar symptoms to COVID-19. So, you know, we need to be thinking about how to handle that here when students panic because somebody actually who has the flu sneezed. And then there's something of a myth about taking temperatures that go along with it, too. Temperatures can spike during the day. If we happen to catch somebody who has a high enough temperature during the day, it's because we got lucky, and perhaps they did, too. Fourth, cover very briefly, there's long-term effects of COVID-19 that we have no idea what they are, but they will be there because a disease that affects the heart and lungs, and there are lots of them, become lifelong problems. We also are learning that immunity that people have who have contracted the disease and have antibodies, if they've had milder cases, that immunity doesn't last very long. So we really don't know what we're getting into long-term, and we shouldn't celebrate the end too quickly. And then finally, so that we don't, I don't leave you without some sense of hope, we can do awfully simple things here. Wear masks, wash hands, and be willing to step back and say, "Okay, we have to take a break for a while," and not put each other at risk in schools. COVID-19 is here. The NIAID, Tony Fauci's group, and other world bodies have strategic plans that call for dealing with this for at least four years, if all things go well. And there's one statistic I'll leave you with to remember, and I just hope this doesn't become analogous for teaching professionals as well. We passed another milestone in the last week or so. Over 900 medical staff and other healthcare providers have now died in the past several months, saving others' lives from COVID-19 while losing their own. This is serious stuff, and I know you know that. And if, again, I just urge, if we're not sure, use those gifts of time and distance that we have at our disposal. Thank you for allowing me to address you.
Thank you, David. I hope you will be able to stick around with us for the rest of the meeting, if that's possible. Chris, we have any, thank you, David, any other communication, public comment?
I do not have anything in the chat room right now.
Okay, well, hopefully we'll have some questions when we get to the chat room. The next item is new business action, and that is action on a start date agreement with teachers. And for the benefit of board members and members of the public who are not already aware of it, this item came up on the 13th, pardon me, on the 10th, at the Union High School Board meeting, where the Union High School took an action to change the teacher's start date. The same motion was considered and passed Monday night by Rockingham School Board. This is the motion. I move to change the teacher's start date for the 2020-2021 school year from September 1st, which it would be under the language of the collective bargaining agreement now in effect, to August 25th, at the request of the WNEA, and with no other changes in any other provision of that collective bargaining agreement. I would appreciate having a motion on this, and then a second. Can I get a motion, please?
Salute.
Okay, is that you, Cheryl?
Yes.
Okay. And do I have a second, please?
A second, Lynn.
Thank you, Lynn. All right. Do we have discussion under the motion? Actually, Chris, I'm going to recognize you on this because I think this is very important for administration in terms of getting school open. So if you can give us a quick overview, and I'll open it up to a wider audience if we need to.
Thank you, David. So the NEA reached out to myself in regards to requesting that they return on August 25th. This is, you know, prior to the first day of school being on September 8th, the original date that the teachers were going to be coming back would be the 24th. With everything going on, they requested that they start on the 25th so they can get into their buildings and their classrooms, work with each other, work with the administration. It's time that we all need, we could use. And so with this, they're not talking any new money. Like Mr. Clark said, we're not looking at changing the CBA in any other way. They're just asking for extra time in the buildings. The time that they do come in, that early time moving from September 1st to the 25th, you know, it's professional development time, and that's something that, you know, I've met with the Ad Hoc Committee for the NEA, and we've discussed it. We're all in agreement with working out the professional development days as the year progresses. And keep in mind also is that there could be a time where their state reduces from 175 days to 170 days. So the motion that you have on the floor tonight, you know, is supported by myself and the rest of the administrative team, and, you know, I think it says a lot about the educators that we have, that they're willing to come back early, when, you know, so many are willing to stay away, period. So it is something that, you know, is supported by the administration.
Thank you, Chris. Is there discussion under the motion? Scanning for hands. I'm not seeing any. In that case, are we ready for the motion? This will be a motion to move the start date for the 2021 school year from September 1st, which is the language of the collective bargaining agreement, to August 25th. There would be no other changes in any other provision of that collective bargaining agreement. Ready for the motion?
I had my hand up.
Well, thank you, Jessa. Okay. Ready for your question or comment?
Well, I was using a hand in chat. I don't know, or in the participant list. It's in the participant list, but that's okay. What is the contracted number of days of instruction of the teachers? How does this affect the calendar?
Right now, it's, you know, like we talked about, it's not going to really affect the calendar. We have 175 days currently by law that we have for student learning, and we're planning on being flexible with those days. Change if they reduce the days from 175 to 170, but that's something that myself and the NEA have talked about, and we're all willing to work together and adjust in those days. So we're not going over the professional development days for the teachers.
So with the late start date, how are we modifying the calendar?
It's, the only modifications that we have right now is we have the September, the new September 8th start date, and right now there haven't been any other modifications to the calendar except adjusting the beginning of the year, the professional development and the training that we have planned.
But for student days, if they start September 8th, they will finish later in June? Were we eliminating vacation?
No, as of right now, unless they reduce the days down to 170, the school year will be going a lot later. But, you know, as you know, that's something, you know, we had no control over regards to starting on September 8th rather than we did. So right now, we're still waiting to hear if we're going to have those days reduced by five. If not, yeah, it means we're going to go a little later. But we're also looking at the point where this year, if we do have snow days, we will look at those as remote instruction days. So we necessarily won't be days that we have to make up. We'll just put that in play. So if we learned anything, we can use the remote instruction to cut back on the amount of snow days.
And our specific holidays in the CBA?
Yes.
Okay. And does this give them more professional development days?
No, because what we're going to do is this trade-off. We have professional development days scheduled within the school calendar year. So if we have to, we've already agreed as an administration to work with the NEA to balance those all out, so they're not going over their agreed-upon professional development days.
But they're at least getting that number?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Jessa. Any other questions? Priscilla, I see your hand.
Yeah, something I hadn't thought about before is that that does not, if there's no other change to the contract, then that doesn't address the fact that there are nine days before the 8th.
I believe the superintendent is queried.
I hadn't thought about that before because the language in the contract says they will start no more than so many days before the students do, so that
And that's
Terminology should include something about doing more of the student day, more of the in-service days before the 8th. But I guess if we all agree that we understand that that's what it's going to do, it'll be all right.
Okay, thank you, Priscilla. That's a good point. Any other question or comment? I'm scanning here. I do not see any hands. Are we ready for the question? It's a motion to change the teacher's start date for the 2021 school year from September 1st, which is the language of the collective bargaining agreement, to August 25th. There would be no other changes in any other provision of the collective bargaining agreement. I'm going to roll call the board. Priscilla, you ready to vote?
Sure. I vote yes.
Thank you. Jason Benson?
Yes.
Thank you, Jason. Jason Terry?
Yes.
Thanks. Cheryl Charles?
Yes.
Thank you, Cheryl. Jessa? Wes Clark?
Yes. Sorry, had trouble with the button.
Okay, thank you, Jessa. Lynn Morgan?
Yes.
Lynn? Deb Wright? Thank you, Deb. Molly Bannock?
Yes.
Thank you, Molly. Okay, we have passed this motion. It still needs to go before the Union Elementary. Chris, I believe that they will be meeting tomorrow night, is that correct?
Tomorrow night at 6 o'clock.
Okay. Thank you for that. Our next item is update on school reopening plans. Chris, is there anything here which has changed since we last discussed this? Anything that you want to bring up, bearing in mind, of course, the fact we're going to have a much more complete discussion next week? I believe you are muted, Chris.
Yeah, there are a few things I think I'd like to bring the board up to speed in regards to some, you know, changes that, you know, we have changes every day, but this is a good time, just because we'll get into the fine details at next week's meeting, but just to give everyone an idea of what we're looking at right now. So as you all know, we started the 100% remote learning offerings for families, and so currently right now, we have about 190 students, 36 of those are for the high school, and about 154 are K through 8.
Can you hear that?
And if I was to give you a quick breakdown
Is the remote running?
If I was to give you a quick breakdown in regards to what it looks like by school, you have about 30 students from Central. You have about 56 students from the middle school. Grafton-Athen School, you have about 23. Saxon's River is at 11, and Westminster-Central is at 34. And so out of all those, you know, 100% remote learning through Vermont Virtual Learn Consortium, we have seven teachers who are tied to that, and they will be trained and receive online teaching certificates for those teachers that will be working with the Vermont Learning Collaborative. In addition to some other quick data that we have, we have about 92%, which is about 186 teachers. Keep in mind, this is based on, you know, anyone who responded to the survey, that will be returning. We have about 4.1%, eight teachers that would not be for medical reasons, and we have about nine teachers who say at the time said that there's a possibility they might not be returning because of personal reasons such as childcare. But as of today, you know, when we went through and said, "Okay, if we have anywhere, you know, around eight teachers that it's really, they don't have a choice, they can't come back, and even if they wanted to," we tried to open up, give those teachers the first opportunities for the remote learning, so we're able to hopefully meet their needs as much as we could based on the circumstances. So that's some quick data on that. Some of the other changes that we made, we did go back, the administrative team, which we meet once a week to discuss the reopening plan and revisiting it, so we're all on the same page. So we did make an adjustment to the first week of school. I think if you recall, from the first go at it, we had it Monday, Tuesday, half-day, Wednesday, we had full remote, and then Thursday and Friday it was broken up. But seeing that Monday's a holiday, we still wanted to get all the students in. So it looks more, very similar to what the first week of school would look like. And so what it looks like now, moving forward for the first week of school, which is September 8th, is that you have Group A, which is A through K, will come in on half a days on Tuesdays and Wednesdays, and then Group B, which is L through Z, will be coming in on Thursday and Friday. And then the following week, we'll go right into our regular schedule that we have tentative, which would be, the only difference would be, we have the full days from Monday and Tuesday for Group A, full days on Thursdays and Fridays for Group B, and Wednesdays will be total remote instruction as we had planned on. So that's another change we have. The other big area that we've been working on is that in the August, the most recent, I think, August 14th release of updated Safe and Healthy Schools, reopening of schools guidance from the AOE, is that the state was finding that, across the state, the AOE was finding that having the first point-of-contact screening for students before they get on the bus was causing a considerable amount of problems in regards to, one, staffing, and, two, you know, what do you do if a student, you know, is at a bus stop and, you know, has a temperature or whatnot? So they backed off on that a little bit, which, you know, we were pleased with, and we still want to move in the direction of having eventually a health monitor on every bus. But under the circumstances right now, even if we wanted to, we don't have enough health monitors to be on every single bus. We'd need about, between monitors to be on every single bus. We'd need about between fifteen and seventeen if we were gonna run all the buses to have health monitors on the buses. I think right now we're up to four or five. So what we're doing right now until we can continue to fill those slots. Because remember, before we even got into this COVID, we're looking to get, um, another body, adult body on the buses just for safety reasons. So we still want to continue to move in that direction. So the first, you know, so all the students would be, still be getting on the bus. And, um, they will, once they arrive at school, that's when they would have the screening done, just like, um, anyone else who was entering the building. So it's one of those things that we had to, um, adjust along the way. And like I said, just like anything else, we want to continue to work having, um, you know, health monitors on every bus. We're in the process of basically looking at the bus routes right now and how many buses that were gonna be needed. Because we're finding, you know, almost about half of the students, um, the parents on the surveys that we've indicated will be taking their, um, students to school. We put out another survey, so we had specifics in regards to where the stops are. So we're currently trying to load that into the software to give us a better idea of how many buses we'll need along as how we're gonna have to consolidate some of these stops. So, um, like I said, we can get into, uh, much more detail in regards to, um, school specifics in regards to, you know, teachers and, you know, how many kids are, do we have, um, an influx of students moving into the SU? And that's kind of the more of the stuff that we'll get into at next week's meeting.
Thank you, Chris. Um, any questions for Chris?
I have a question. If we're not monitoring before they get on the bus, but waiting till they go in the school, what happens if we have a child that can't get in the school? How do we deal with that?
Well, all the students, you know, we, every school has the station set up to do the screening, ask the questions. There are specific things that we have to do. So once they get off the bus, that's when that screening will take place. Once the, if, if we do come across a student, whether it's during the school day or it's at the beginning of the school, you know, all schools have the isolation rooms. We have the protocol in place that we have to follow, put out by the, the CDC. You know, so that was, um, one of the things that we do have protocols in place to make sure that the stu-, the students or adult is isolated. They picked up, uh, immediately and in isolation until that happens. Once that happens, then, um, any areas that they were in, it's very specific, we have to follow. If it's a particular pod, you know, we have, that's closed, you know, we close that pod to three days. And, you know, these are the, you know, more of the details that we can get into next Wednesday. But there are specifics in place to make sure that, um, if there is an outbreak, you know, with the, the CDC and the state works very closely with the school to identify where it is for that school. Because technically, you know, under the circumstances, we could have one school closed and others reopened. But we know in a small SU, that's probably gonna be rare because you do have siblings that are in other schools. You know, so these are all the things that we're trying to take in place, take into account and consideration. As we continue to get closer to the start of school, but we have very strict procedures set up for health screening. And, um, if we do identify a case in the schools and how to, um, communicate that with the state, families, and procedures on what it looks like. Does the school get closed? Does the pod get closed? So that's pretty much where we are with that.
Another question. With the younger students, the parent was supposed to be there to answer the questions. So do we have that, uh, form that the parents will fill out answering the question so that the student can hand it in once they get to school off the bus?
Yeah, I mean, we're trying to cut back on bringing anything in from home, including forms. Parents are aware of the, the questions that will be asked on the forms. And, um, the teachers, you know, one of the beauties about having a small schools and small SUs is that teachers know their kids very well in regards to, um, even, you know, relationships with the parents and the community and stuff. So, um, although the parents will be aware of the questions that are being asked, we're trying to, um, cut back on any kind of papers going back and forth from home and school. And it'll be, um, if we are looking at, um, moving forward with putting it on, um, a Google Doc. So if parents wanted to, to fill it out. But there's a lot of logistics to that, too. What they fill out, you know, do they have time to just fill that out in the morning? It's not, they can fill it out the night before. And then, you know, someone could fill it out the night before. In the morning, something else happens. So there's all these questions that we kind of really have to, uh, navigate the waters to figure out the best way to do this. And the best way right now is just to make sure that, um, we're following what we have in place. We're following the CDC guidelines. And we're trying not to miss anything along the way.
Okay.
Chris, we have a handout from Jessa West Clark. And Deb, I also see you have a question. Am I correct?
Yes.
Jessa and then Deb. Go ahead, Jessa.
Okay. I actually have multiple questions. And I don't know if you want to wait for
And let Deb have a couple, and then you can have a
So my first question is about the AOE. The AOE put out the first Safe and Healthy reopening guidance, like, June seventeenth. Um, and since then, then the CDC updated their guidelines, the AOE did not put out new guidance till August eleventh. Um, and the CDC has actually reversed their position on daily temperature checks and is recommending them now. Can we expect the AOE to be a bit more responsive going forward? And then, um, from the live stream on Fact TV, I've already gotten parents asking, if a kid gets on the bus without a temperature screening and is then found to have a fever in school because the newest handbook from the SU says one or more symptoms will be considered, uh, Corona presumptive positive and they go in isolation. Does that mean all the kids on that bus are considered contacts at that point and will have to go into quarantine until that student is cleared? It seems like other schools are using the two or more symptom, um, guidelines for that. I guess we'll start with those.
I, I'm, I'm never gonna try to speak for the AOE, so I'll just leave that one at there. Um, in regards to the, um, the bus, I think if, you know, to be on the safe side, yeah, I think if we go by the, the two, the two system, you know, checkboxes and stuff, then we're always gonna eye air on the side of caution. If, if a student gets on the bus and they get to the school and we find out that there's, there's temperatures and, and stuff, and more than, you know, one symptom and stuff, then yeah, we're gonna put protocols into place.
Do you think parents will be rightfully livid if a student got on the bus with a fever and it wasn't noticed till they got to school? And that's a question I don't know the answer to.
I mean, I, you know, I would expect that, yeah, I would expect they would be upset. But, you know, that's one of the things that we have to continue to look at. Um, if we can't, you know, right now, we don't have the, the manpower and that's why the state kind of backed off on it, um, throughout the state to have, you know, these screenings done before every kid gets on the bus. The only other, you know, option we have, if, if we, you know, were going to, um, then we wouldn't, we wouldn't run buses at all. And I think, and I say that only if, if, because that is a, that is a possibility. If we can't guarantee that, you know, students are gonna be safe when they're on the buses, you know, do we run the buses at all? I know we're already looking at, there's not gonna be a whole lot, you know, the, the buses are not gonna be to their capacity based on just the amount of parents who'd be driving their students to school. So we're gonna have, we're gonna be able to distance them a, a lot more on the buses. But, uh, yeah, you know, it's, and there's a lot of legitimate concerns we have. And, you know, I don't have all the answers. You know, to do this and the screening for getting students screened, be, or temperatures before they even get on the bus. I don't have any answers right now because I don't have the bodies to do it.
Okay, and then, um,
Would you give me just a moment? Um, I want to give Deb a couple of questions and we'll come back and take a few more. Deb, are you ready?
I'm sure. Um, as a, as an, as a company owner and a contractor, our employees by the state of Vermont are required to take their, we provide thermometers, forehead thermometers. And our employees are required to take their temperature before they leave their home. And if they report a one point, one hundred point four, they can't come to work. They're also now required to fill out paperwork every morning saying that they say, no, 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 it don't have any of these symptoms. And they sign it. They have to sign off to say they're responsible that they don't have COVID. So my question was initially what Jessa already said, which is that all the, the entire bus could be considered COVID, I don't know, alert, whatever the, um, the particular protocol is for that. Because they were exposed to a child who might have COVID, might be COVID positive. And that means going to all these schools and do you track all of the names? I mean, that, there should be another way to prevent this. Um, getting parents' participation be one, but I know that's another problem. But again, you already addressed some of it. All I'm saying is that we have protocols that I must follow with my employees to get them to go to work. You'd think we could do some of this for the school. If, if indeed if that's critical, which I'm still on the fence about. Thanks.
Yeah, so I can respond to that real quick. Um, you know, we are encouraging all families to take their students' temperatures before getting on the bus. But as you know, like, like you said, you know, are people actually gonna do it? We can only hope that. So hopefully that'll give us a good starting point that before they even get to the bus stop, we're hoping they're not sending their child to the bus stop or on the bus if they have a temperature. And those are the, um, the guidance that we've, we've sent out and we're working with parents. Beyond that, like I said, you know, the, the only other thing we can do at this point, because we don't have the personnel to be on the buses to do those screenings, is not run transportation during this time. And I, I, so
Thank you. Thank you, Chris. Um, I did see, uh, your hand, uh, Jason Terry. I will go back to, um, Jessa because I said I would. So Jess, another question that I would like to, uh, hear, uh, Jason Terry's question. So go ahead.
I will try to keep it brief. Um, most everybody's here parents. Um, and you have a kid with an ear infection and a fever that they are not experiencing ill effects from. It's pretty common to load them up with ibuprofen before you put them on the bus. So that's gonna happen. And then the guidelines for the school say you have thirty minutes to pick up your sick child. What are we doing if parents don't arrive within thirty minutes?
They stay in isolation.
Thank you, Chris. And I realize, Jessa, you may have additional questions. Jason Terry?
I had a quick question. How many total students in the school district are taking a bus?
I'd have to call that up. It's, I, I have that data, but I don't have it called up on the screen right now. I think it, I couldn't guess right now because it fluctuates. It was one point, it wa-, it was one percentage when we, before we went to total remote learning and there was another percentage. And, but, you know, I will have that on next week's meeting.
Okay. Jessa, was there another question?
No, I'm good. I'll wait for the school, individual school meeting. Thanks.
Do, do we have any other questions? I'm not seeing any
I do have another question.
Yes, Deb.
And David, I do, I do too. This is Cheryl. You just can't see me.
Okay, um, I'm gonna, uh, recognize Deb and then Cheryl.
So the other question has to do with children who walk, which there are quite a few, and my grandchildren are among them. Are they going to be playing on the playground? And what happens if one child goes in and winds up being hot, has some positive symptoms and has infected the entire playground? How is that gonna be?
Well, they're screened before they even get into the school in the morning, um, whether they're walkers, buses, dropped off by parents. And so, um, you know, we would catch them hopefully if they ever temperature or what have you before they even get into the building. Playground space and everything, um, we have the six-foot in place. Playgrounds have to be sanitized and everything else. So I would think that anyone who's using, you know, any student who's coming in the morning, they're gonna be screened before they even enter the building. So we'll
Okay. Thank you, Chris.
Thank you.
Cheryl?
Thank you. Um, during the, during the last school year, we made a commitment to having, um, a person on each bus in addition to the driver. And Chris has referred to that tonight. The language, Chris, you're talking about now are health monitors. And yet, we, um, and going forward, you're talking about a health monitor on every bus. Having said that, we, we want another person for safety reasons, as you said. I don't think we have discussed at the board level, at least I've not heard it, what's going on with a process of rehiring paraprofessionals? And I wondered if you could up to date, update us on that, please. It's related.
Yeah. So, um, with the paraprofessionals, um, we're recalled back. We needed majority of them, we recalled back for special education purposes. And there's a lot of work that has to be done with IEPs, so we, we called them all back. I think there were probably around six that took jobs elsewhere. And so we, all of them would've been called back except for those six, or if they declined to want to come back into the current situation. So, um, we were, out of the pairs we called back, like I said before, we have about four or five that we are going to rotate amongst the buses. And we're, and so, but you never know, you know, once we find out what, how many buses we're running, you know, we might have, you know, a health monitor on that bu-, those buses. So we did, we did go back and called back to pairs because, because we needed them under these circumstances. With the, meeting the, the students' needs and the IEPs that have to be addressed. So we did do the callbacks. Everyone on the
What about regular pairs, please?
Right now, um, we don't real-, there's a few regular ed pairs. But for majority, the, all the ones that are coming back are, have been, um, offered a special ed pair position.
Cheryl, any additional follow-up?
Well, I, I think maybe we'll talk about that more next week. Thank you.
Well, if they were regular ed pairs before, now they were reassigned to be special ed pairs, if they were gonna come back.
Thank you, Chris. Chris, I'm, I'm not seeing any additional hands. You were
Molly Bannock?
Molly Bannock? You're recognized.
Thank you. I'm listening to all this and don't get me wrong, just because my child graduated from high school. I mean, I'm two working parents with a child. I, I understand how hard it is to navigate through the mornings sometimes and afternoons. I'm kind of concerned and I listen to this, you know, we as community members, as parents, we gotta take some responsibility ourselves. And so if we wanna, you know, fill our kids with ibuprofen and put them on the bus, we're making a huge mistake. We all know that. Um, I, I, I know where we're at. But we really, the parents, guardians, everybody's gonna have to take a little responsibility here. It's not all the school's responsibility. We are trying really hard to get the kids to school, to get them educated. And it is, the school has to take a lot of responsibility, but I hope somehow that we can get parents to take some responsibility and, and do these health checks, whether we run buses or not run buses. We're a rural area. You know, I'm sure that's gonna upset some people if we don't run buses. And, but if we're not willing to take that responsibility of doing those self-checks in the morning, then we're setting ourselves up for failure. That's all I got.
Thank you, Molly. Uh, do we have anyone else, Chris? I'm not seeing any other hands. Okay, if
I have one more thing.
Yes, Deb.
I understand Molly's concern, but to say, at the same time, we've had this conversation about at-risk families with at-risk children. That's not going to happen. And that's going to be part of the, follow the problem and part of the fallout we have to deal with.
Thank you, Deb. I think actually most people in the Wyndham Northeast educational community are very well aware of the point that you just made. And, um, it's a valid point. And I think certainly Molly's point about, um, personal and family responsibility, um, is also well-made because it would take a lot of the burden off of, um, school if we can have as many families as possible pulling their weight. So thank you for bringing it up, Deb. And also thank you, Molly, for bringing it up. Chris, do we have, uh,
David?
Yes, Priscilla.
I know there was one district that put out information on car, possible carpooling, um, and asked those questions. And because they were, and they sent out a statement along with theirs that said that, you know, children that were carpooling weren't at, at risk for, you know, contracting it any more than, than any, I don't know how they worded it. But anyway, it sounded good. And I was wondering if we could do something like that, that might encourage the carpooling so that we weren't having to run as many buses. And also because you've mentioned so many, Chris, that have, you know, are not going to ride the bus anyway. If we could develop some kind of schedule and help them out a little bit in working that out, it might solve our problem here. Because as I think it was Cheryl that said, if their district has said they wouldn't run buses without the extra person on it, that is a big concern. And I know that's kind of what's been happening. Rockingham right now doesn't currently have another meeting scheduled till after school does start. So we're not gonna be able to discuss some of this unless we have a special meeting.
So I'm gonna actually give you a, a response here. Certainly not a, uh, complete response. But we will be meeting again next week. Um, there are a number of ideas out there. You may be aware, Priscilla, and I think other people also are, that, uh, River Valley Technical Center is the host for a daycare program, which I believe is called World of Discovery. One of the issues that, uh, it appears that a lot of our, uh, teaching professionals and paraprofessionals One of the issues that it appears that a lot of our teaching professionals and paraprofessionals face is they have, in some cases, young kids who they simply have no way to provide for them if they're gonna go to work. It's, I think, a question which is at least in the same league as the one you've just raised about carpooling, which is what are some of the innovative things that we might be able to do to make things work a little bit more smoothly? And I want to back Chris up here just a little bit and say that I think we're all well aware that it's a huge struggle right now to get the schools open. And I very much am backing administration and doing that. And I think we really do need, as boards, to do some of that brainstorming, like you've just mentioned. And actually, it's part of the reason for questions and answers tonight, Priscilla, because we may have, you know, more out-of-the-box thinking come out tonight before we're all done. So I, I believe that Chris has heard that suggestion. I'm in no position to react to it, but I think that's one of many that we should have under consideration. So once again, thank you for making it. Chris, anything else before we actually do questions and answers that you're aware of?
No, I'm good.
Okay. All right. We're down to item six, questions and answers. Do we have some questions that we can try to answer? Do we have any innovative suggestions like the one we just heard from Priscilla?
I have some, but if others want to go first, I've certainly spoken a lot so far.
I'm looking to see if I have hands, so I'm not seeing hands. David, why don't you go ahead and hopefully that will, shall we say, trigger some more discussion?
Sure, sure. And I'm available to the board in any way that I can, I can help. I appreciate your introduction, David. And I kind of avoided saying more because I was taking so much time. But, you know, I've been in pandemic epidemic situations here in some work that actually got me featured on ABC and CBS a couple of times, dealing with tough situations. I was in Hong Kong after the H1N1 with some medical folks there. And one of the keys for their getting it under control is just, regardless of how painful and boring it is, clean, clean, clean. Just keep cleaning on the prospects. You might be doing some good, and eventually you will. Any comment surfaced? The, the bigger concern that I've read in the material for reopening and in comments, I agree with you, Molly, about responsibility. A loophole, a big problem, I say, is with masks, people bringing in their own masks. There's an assumption that they'll be clean. And how do we know that? And if they're not clean, what you're doing is you're introducing to the school and to other people every germ that's on the mask that those, that that student picked up in the community and never cleaned. That, that's a big risk. And here, and I think we need to acknowledge it. We're in the proposals from the state and elsewhere within the district, there's reliance that folks will clean their, have clean masks, have clean surfaces. Something that was introduced, it comes from a study at Harvard recently, and was actually featured on VPR as well, is that if a group of folks all wear relatively cheap disposable surgical masks, the three ply ones, it's 90, I'm sorry, it's 86% as effective as everyone having the high-end N95 masks. You know, if the school was able to get everyone boarding a bus to put on a mask that they use throughout the day. And if they sneezed, or somebody sneezed on them, give them another mask. And they took it home. If they wanted to wear it more, it might be better protection than they have here. And then every day at the first point of contact, give a new mask. And what you will do, I believe, is greatly improve the risks of folks not contract, contacting, contracting the disease. It'll be as if, again, 86% of, of N95 reduction, and that's huge. So I want to implore you're, you're doing that. Yeah, I don't think we can count on folks to keep their masks clean. And another thing it's worth considering here, too, is with folks who vape or, or smoke. There's been some recent studies done to show that that's a bigger risk, not just because it affects the lungs, but because you have kids often gathering in groups where there, somebody's lookout and everybody is vaping or smoking here, and they're sharing cigarettes, they're sharing the vape devices, they're not wearing masks, they're coughing, et cetera. So I wanted to also pass along that is something to monitor and hope that that would be put into, in, into place. That's, that's being seen as a big risk, especially in schools that have had to already close down. So those are at least a couple of, of ideas worth considering. Disposable masks and precautions against vaping and smoking. The, the effects of COVID-19 are gonna be long-term. Anytime you affect the heart and the lungs, the potential for long-term lifelong effects is huge. I put my remarks into a letter form that I'd like to circulate later. But, you know, thanks for allowing me to, to share. I appreciate the seriousness with which you're taking this matter. You, I appreciate your unwillingness to be handed a package of here's what to do and are looking to what's in the best interest of our community. So thank you from the bottom of my heart.
Well, thank you, David, for spending some time with us. Chris, do we have other additional questions? I know we have about 30 people in the chat room, maybe 35.
Jason Terry had his hand up.
Jason Terry, you are recognized. Thanks, Molly.
So I had a couple of questions for Mr. Mulholland, actually. I think it's really important that we stop admiring the problem. A lot of this is, you know, heard it before, heard the rhetoric before. Mr. Mulholland, you didn't mention what the recovery rate was for COVID.
Sure. I'd be happy to address that. And forgive me if I sound a little bit lawyerly and say we don't know. But that's the honest truth.
So. Plus, aren't they?
We don't know what recovery is.
Well, then how do we know what, what your, your numbers that you were spinning out of 5.6 million and 175,000 people that died are actually true then?
Those are, those are real cases, and those are real deaths. The bodies have been counted. And there's people in the hospital have been counted. Recovery rate is something we cannot say because we do not, because of two factors. One is, we don't know what recovery from this is. People will get it again. People, we're assuming folks are recovered when they leave a hospital, when they get dismissed to care. But some countries like Spain and the UK, they've stopped using the word recover altogether because of folks getting it again. We do know that folks who do not build, or who have some kind of antibody, you know, antigen help, if they've had a mild case, it doesn't last long. So do we call them recover? Do we give them false hope, only to have them get sick again in the future when they thought they were gonna be okay? So I, I know what you're saying, but the word recover is one we cannot say with certainty.
I have two additional hands, Jason. You want a brief follow-up on that before we?
A few, have a few. Give me, give me a minute here.
You got it.
So, you know, I, I heard you say effects a few times. So, but you're not addressing what the effects are, long-term, financial or emotional. Two-thirds of high school athletes are already experiencing depression over canceled sports. So it's fine to give these numbers. I appreciate your input. But you gotta come with some solutions also. You can't, your, your solution was, this is gonna last four years. So what, what is, what is your expert opinion solution? I will agree with you on one thing, is that nothing beats good management. And I've said that for months now. Managing, managing it, nothing beats that. You know, as far as the bus thing, nothing beats good management. You know, I've said last week that, you know, parents are responsible, and I was laughed at. So, you know, I appreciate your, your coming on board, but fear mongering is not something that, that I, I wish to engage in. And, you know, you haven't addressed the effects long-term socially, emotionally, anxiety, financially, and you're, you're dancing around the recovery rate of 95 to 98%. So, thank you.
If I may reply, first of all, I'm not dancing around. We know, do know those folks are discharged. Okay, that is not the same thing as recovery here. And, and that's a separate discussion for another day, but that is not recovery. That's discharge from active care. The single most important statistic we should be looking at, and I say this coast to coast, is percentage of active cases. How many cases are unresolved? That's the vital statistic. Nationally, it's like 44%. That's something that we are extremely high numbered on as compared to most of the world. Most of our cases, we don't know because we keep finding new cases or they keep showing up. And the, the cases that we do know, they are active cases that we still have to deal with for a long time. And again, we cannot say recover until we know exactly what that, that means. As far as solutions go, here, I, I mentioned the masks. And I would love to have discussions on some specific things. I'm concerned about giving global advice because that's not as effective as saying, here's the situation, and here's how we deal with it. From what you've described about the, the busing concerns and, and folks not being 100% compliant, which I think is, is fairly accurate, then supply the masks. There are other things that can be done, like if somebody comes to pick up their kid who has a fever and some other issues here, you leave the parent in the car or whoever comes and pick him up. You, you won't know, the person who escorts the child will not know if that's the person who's actively transmitting the disease around the community. You won't know that. Don't allow anybody related to that child to come into the building and have that room near a door, an outside door. So there's a minimal amount of distance to, to travel. So that person doesn't have to walk through common spaces to get back outside. And the other thing again is you're coming upon flu season, and that will have some unique characteristics that, that are gonna play out. And there's gonna be idiosyncrasies to our areas. Are folks willing to live with the uncertainty whether a cough or a sneeze is the flu? And how are you gonna verify that? Will a child need to come in with some kind of a, a note? I know there's in the different protocols about folks being quarantined or self-quarantined for a period of time. Where's the medical note to say what this person actually had? And what that person should do? So I wish the state had, had said those sorts of things. And, you know, if there's other specific areas of concern, I'm very happy to share what I've learned so far.
David, I'm gonna thank you, but I'm also going to thank Jason Terry because this is exactly what I was hoping that we would have in the way of dialogue tonight. Obviously, you are a medical professional. Jason, I think, very well represents the sentiments of his community, not just his own, in some of the remarks he's made. And I think Jason has raised some legitimate questions, which maybe need some more thoughtful and detailed answers. And when I was working with Chris ahead of this meeting tonight, I said, Chris, we're probably not gonna have all the answers that people ask tonight. So let's make sure that we can note what those questions are and do our best to come back next week and answer them. So I'm going to respectfully suggest that we put Jason's questions in that category. You may have additional questions as well, Jason. And hopefully, we're gonna have a time, a little bit of time here so we can get all around the room once. And then again, I did have a couple of hands up. I have a hand up from Jessa West Clark. I also had a hand up from Amanda Desmaras, if I pronounce your name correctly, Amanda. And if you are still here and would still like to ask that question, I would like to recognize you, and we would be interested to hear what you have to say. And I believe you're unmuted, Amanda. How are we doing with Amanda, Chris? Do you have a read on that situation?
Says she's unmuted, so must be on her end.
Okay. Amanda, I'm going to go to Jessa West Clark. And I personally am unable to render you very much technical help here. Perhaps someone else in the room can.
Let's see.
Do I hear, who, who am I hearing now? Is that you, Amanda, or is that Jessa? Okay, for the time being, I'm gonna recognize Jessa West Clark and Amanda. I would like to get back to you. Go ahead, Jessa.
Okay. Amanda, it might be that your phone or computer is muted, even though your Zoom session isn't. I am, first of all, I wish to address Mr. Jason Terry and let him know that this is respectful debate. And I do appreciate his position. And I'm very thankful we have our own epidemiology expert here. I have a couple of comments. One, the clean masks, we actually, well, I had sent some information and talked to Cheryl Charles about that during the task force meeting. There are some schools around here that are not allowing students to bring their own mask. They're supplying surgical masks specifically because we have a large population of renters who don't have access to a washer and dryer. They have to go to the laundromat, and that's probably not something they're gonna go do and wash masks every day, even though they can be hand washed. And then I have a couple other comments, like for Jason Terry. I know football is very important to you, but we also have students starting in the middle school who participate in geography P. We have the Envirothon, we have District Band, we have All-State Band. Do those students outnumber the amount of NFL players we've produced from our football program? I think we need to take, take account of everybody. I know sports are important, and I do understand that. And I do sort of take exception to your "stop admiring the problem" quote. I'm not sure exactly what you meant by that. Science takes time, and the fact that science evolves over time means you're doing better science. So yeah, the long-term effects of this aren't known because people who have recovered are less than six months into it. There's trauma surgeons that are finding damage in people's lungs, incidentally, when they break their shoulders. I have a couple other comments. The CDC has gone back and forth on temperature screening, and I guess this is for Mr. Mulholland. And I'm not sure why. It looks like kids, like 40, 43% have a fever as a symptom with a positive coronavirus test. So I'm not sure if they're gonna flip-flop back and forth on that again. But I do want to say we're not admiring the problem. And Jason Terry, I actually feel very passionate about this. I work at UMass right now. I'm waiting my testing schedule to be sent. All of our faculties, faculty and staff are to be tested once a week, students twice a week, especially those that are working in healthcare. And I know the CDC is not recommending routine testing for schoolchildren, and I'm not. And I'm not entirely sure why, but they are for college students. Um, I'm gonna probably be suggested, subjected to testing twice a week because my other job is in healthcare. And I don't usually pull the EMS card, but I would like Jason, Mr. Jason Terry to know. I know what it's like to have your face six inches from somebody who's very sick and listen to their lungs and realize what they have and wonder if you're gonna go home and kill your family. And that is why I have been sort of so passionate about the healthcare side of this. I do understand the depression in teens, the, um, isolation and the fact that our younger kids from least advantaged families have already slipped eighteen months in their learning from being online from March. I totally understand that. Somebody else can take that up. I'm, I'm just sticking with the, uh, keeping our kids safe right now from this. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Jessa. And Jason, I will recognize you here in just a minute. I just want to see if we have Amanda yet, and then, then, uh, you will be up next. Uh, Amanda Desmaris, are you in the room?
Can you hear me now?
I think so.
Okay, I was just wanting to point out that the chat function's not totally working. So we're asking people for, if they wanted to say anything, but they don't have a way of saying, hey, listen to me.
The chat, the chat function, um, goes to me directly. It doesn't get shared with everyone. Um, so it is on and is working, but people don't have the option to chat amongst each other. It just goes directly to me. And I try to put in the questions as they come through.
Yeah, I was just trying to point that out, but that's all.
Okay, thank you, Amanda. Um, Chris, if we have people in the chat, um, I would like to get to them. I think that, uh, Deb Wright, uh, wants to comment here. I did have her told, uh, tell Jason that I, I was gonna recognize him. And, uh, I'm doing that now, Jason, and I'm hoping that, um, you can be somewhat succinct so I can move to Deb.
Absolutely. Jess, I, I just wanted to, uh, address your comments. Um, when I say stop admiring the problem, it seems like every meeting we talk about the problem of COVID and nobody's coming up with solutions. And, you know, I, I am very concerned also. Um, and I am concerned, and nobody has addressed the, the emotional and the financial, uh, aspect of it as far as a solution. Um, there's, we can talk about the problem and
That's a fair point.
And so, and I am, I have stated several times, it's not just about sports. It's about the arts, it's about music. My son is a high school, uh, sorry, middle school band teacher in Lebanon, New Hampshire. And, um, so, you know, I am very concerned about him. I'm very concerned about all of the students. I'm very concerned about all of it. But I just want to, you know, we already know the problem, but I want to move towards how do we fix it and move on as a society? That's my point. Thank you.
Thank you, Jason. Deb? Deb, Deb Wright?
Here I am, had to unmute my mic. Um, I'm, I'm concerned with all, with the repeated, um, appearance of Mr. Mulholland on the two meetings, uh, when I was, the August eleventh report from the Education Secretary, Dan French, said that they are strongly recommending in-person education for K through five and reducing the recommended distancing to three feet instead of six, which talks about the ability to, the capacity to handle more children longer. And yet, despite that, we rush to judgment to make a hybrid, to move to a hybrid program, when this is what the Agency of Education is putting out there. And yet, we don't care. We're not planning on modifying the program or listening to them, which is odd because typically, typically we listen to everything they say. Um, again, as Jason Terry had said, there were a lot of emotional concerns or a lot of financial concerns. We are, we are stranding some of our desperately needing children to a confinement of home, five days out of seven. I don't agree with it. I do, I do not believe that all of our children are succeeding at distance learning. I also don't believe all of our teachers are succeeding at distance learning either, according to some of the parents I've talked to. Um, the, the whole, the masking thing, um, uh, I don't know what to say. You're telling people you don't, you mistrust those, so don't bring your own damn mask. We're going to provide them for you and increasing the cost of education because we're doing that. Although everyone in the state medically has said we're fine with cloth masks. And now we're being, now night, we're being told we can't use our own masks. Then, um, and, um, again, you can tell I'm agitated. I am very agitated. I'm agitated because a lot of parents are going to be very desperate. A lot of children are gonna be more desperate, thanks.
Deb, I'm gonna respond to you. And I, uh, there are two things I want to mention. Number one, as you're well aware, boards set policy and then, uh, depend on their administrations to carry that policy out. And there is absolutely no question at all that, um, the, uh, pattern on which the schools will operate this year is a policy decision. Um, and I believe that at our previous SU meeting, which was only two weeks ago, um, there seemed, I believe, to be a general consensus among the board members. And I cannot speak for the public. I'm only speaking about, um, what, how I read the board that night was that there was a general consensus that these boards would like to get school as open as possible, as quickly as possible. And, um, that bluntly is one of the reasons that I wanted to have this meeting tonight because we need to start getting these questions, um, that you've raised and that Jason Terry has raised and that David Mulholland has raised out in the room so that we can start discussing them and see if we can't work toward getting those schools open. Um, we know that we have the space at the Union High School. Um, it appears we also have the space, uh, at the Athens Grafton School as well as Westminster School. It appears we do not have the space currently at, uh, Bellows Falls Central School. Now, that raises the question of what can we do to find sufficient safe space to operate, um, a full program there as soon as possible? These are the kind of questions that hopefully we're gonna start answering. And we're asking some of the questions tonight. And I'm very hopeful that we'll start having some of those questions as soon as Wednesday night. Now, having said that, I'm gonna ask both the board and the public's forbearance here just a little bit because I think that step one is to get the schools open. Step two is to work, uh, just as, uh, quickly and safely as we can to open those schools, um, as close as possible to the model that, um, we know would be, um, optimum, particularly for the younger kids who need, uh, the, um, in-class contact time the most. So, um, hopefully I'm not, you don't feel I'm arguing with you, Deb. What I'm trying to say is that I'm not aware that there's anyone in the room who isn't, uh, out for the same solution. We just need to be cognizant of the risks are and be certain that, um, any steps we take um, are, are designed to minimize those risks to the degree that we possibly can. Okay, I've said quite a lot here and I'm the chair and really should be, uh, moderating that meeting and not running my mouth. So I apologize both to the board and to the public. And I'm gonna ask you, Chris, if you have, uh, anyone in, in the chat who would like to be recognized?
Yeah, Mr. Mulholland would like to be recognized again and respond to some of those things.
And, and Chris, if I may, before we, we, uh, recognize David Mulholland again, I just want to know if we have anyone who has not had an opportunity, um, to speak tonight um, in the chat with either a question or a comment?
I've had a few comments, but they were directed towards me and I was able to answer them. So, um, I do not right now.
I have a comment.
Is that you, Lynn Morgan?
Yes.
Thank you.
Uh, in the news this evening, I was watching, they were, uh, talking about the masks that New Hampshire has that they got through FEMA for the schools. And they were being distributed to all the different schools. Chris, have we gotten anything from FEMA in that reference? Do we have a supply of masks?
Yes, we do. We, um, we pretty much put our order in through the state in regards to, um, how many teachers and students we have. And we did get those in, so, yes.
How, how long would something that we have work if we were to provide the masks for the students? I'm concerned with some of the students in my area that they wouldn't even be able to get a hold of cloth masks.
Yeah, we're, we're approaching it as this, right now, there's no way we'd be able to provide masks to students on a regular basis. We, um, one, we don't have, you know, our, that would wipe out our supply that we have right now. And then getting more masks would be next to impossible once all the schools are open. So we're encouraging that, um, you know, that, uh, we're encouraging people to bring their own masks and wash them. That's all we can do is encourage them. But students who don't have them, um, the school does have masks to supply for students that we will give them a couple masks, but, you know, the families and the students will have to be responsible for those masks. We wouldn't, we don't have the, the resources nor the supply to continually provide masks as, as much as we'd like to, just do everyone on a regular basis. But we did put our order in with the state, we do have that.
Okay, uh, one other quick question. Would there be any way for the school to have a washing machine? Or one person could take all the masks home from the school for the day and wash them and bring them back in the morning so that all the kids had clean masks?
Um, I know some of the schools do have washer and dryer facilities. But the bigger issue there is, is we, we explore things like that. Um, that would be if there is something on those masks. One, I would never want anyone to bring them home to clean in their own machine and want to bring them from one school to another and risk contamination then too. So, I mean, these things that we've talked about, we do have washes and dryers. And for those schools, they can use them. But, um, beyond that, it's, it's, it's a tough one.
Okay.
Thank you, Lynn. Priscilla, are you, uh, ready to be recognized?
Yes. I flipped over there instead of in the middle all of a sudden. This mute and unmute drives me nuts. Anyway, what I was gonna say was, we discussed, um, at our meeting, um, the Rockingham Board Meeting, that, for example, you said Central didn't have enough space, but they have only four, four fifths of their students that are, will be there as a result of thirty signing up for the virtual. So that changes the outlook for how, what space they have. It also changes the outlook for all the other schools. Four fifths of the students will be at, uh, Middle School, um, seven eighths at, um, Saxon's River. Um, I don't have any statistics, of course, for Graff Athens or Westminster, but it looks like your numbers are pretty high that are taking the virtual. So you might want to look at the possibility of what that reduces yours to as well. Cause I know we talked with, um, Mr. Pratt on Monday about, you know, whether that would change the outlook and whether we could move to maybe more in-person sooner. And I know he was looking at that and considering that as, as a possibility. You know, even if it's not in-person, if you could move to four days a week, like, um, our neighboring, uh, district here, uh, Chester in that area are doing, it would help our students have more consistency than what Deb was referring to as the, um, five days not there and two days there. That would at least give us two days a day off and two days there. Or, you know, even, and then go to the five days so that we can get those kids back in school and back doing it. If, if the spacing works out and with the reduction in the state saying three to six feet instead of six, if we want to go to that, that would even make it easier for our teachers. That would be the Kelly Green's classroom that I looked at the other day. She could at least walk from the front to the back, down through her rows of students and be able to speak to them as, as she was doing that because there, she would have that distance. So some of those things are considerations that I think we seem, certainly need to be looking at pretty soon because we have satisfied homeschooling and remote for those parents that don't want to send their kids. We've satisfied the hybrid for that group of parents that want that. But we have not done anything for those parents that wanted the full time. So we have to be considering what we can do for them. And babysitting is not a, necessarily an option for doing that. We need to provide education, that's our, that's our role. Safe education. Thanks.
Thank you, Priscilla. Chris?
Yeah, I just wanted to follow up, you know, a lot, what I'm hearing and stuff. Um, I know I sound like a broken record, but people have to understand is that this is changing on a regular basis. If we had, if we were able to put kids, all the kids in the school safe, safely with the social distancing in place, that's what we would have done. But we can't do that. When we have, um, if we take into consideration now, yes, the, we're seeing that we do have a lot of students who are doing the remote learning. And it does cut down on the numbers in the classrooms. However, we also have some of these schools now, some of these teachers are designated to remote learning and will not be in the classroom. So therefore, you have to consolidate classes. Um, they'll still be small, but you don't have the teachers that we used to at one point. Like I said all along, our end result is to get kids back in school as much as possible. But the data is, the safety has to come first. And we can't do that based on, um, the social distancing that we have. Um, the recommend, anything that you get from the OE, their recommendations, they're not required. They go three to six feet for the, three feet for the younger grades. But I'm not willing to say I'm gonna put kids closer than six feet based on the inconsistent information we keep getting on a regular basis. Flopping back and forth between three feet, six feet. So, um, all good points are being made, but I don't think any of us have all the answers. If we did, we wouldn't be in the position we are in right now. Um, including, you know, getting students in school, um, as soon as possible. And like I said, what we, what we talked about yesterday is gonna be different what we talk about today. And today is gonna be different tomorrow. That's how much it's changing. You don't necessarily always have the, the bigger agencies on the same page either. So, um, I, and I hear what everyone's saying, but I'll be the first to tell you, I don't have all the answers. But I know we, um, my administrative team, we meet on a regular basis, at least once a week, um, to talk about all this stuff. The principals meet with their school task force all the time. I mean, so there's constantly meeting going on around the COVID on top of everything else that has to be done for, uh, just even if you have a regular opening of school. So, um, I know people are frustrated. We are too as educators, but we don't have all the answers. But that's why we continue to go back and revisit it and make the changes as the data allows us to. And Mr., must, Mr., uh, still wanted to speak.
Yeah, thank you. Just, um, broadly, yeah, I do appreciate the questions and the, the passion of, of folks and, you know, not offended by anything. I'm a New Yorker, uh, originally. So, and I, I really appreciate what you had to say, uh, Chris, about this too. And I guess on the, on the medical side, you know, there's, this is novel coronavirus. This, this is new. And when we start addressing a situation, we take what we know to be the best things to do from other situations that we think are similar. And then we kind of figure out what applies and what doesn't apply. What, what do we have in our tool belts already? What, what's there and what do we need to adapt? And collectively, that's, you know, what I hear, what I see we're doing, um, uh, here. An experience, uh, cause I wanted to also underscore, um, Jason's point here as well about this, uh, the psychosocial, emotional parts of things. After Hurricane Andrew, um, I helped, uh, Catholic charities lead a, a group to do a needs assessment after the, uh, uh, US government had declared victory and left. And within a mile square of, uh, Noranja Lakes, we found over five thousand people needing help, sixty percent of which were kids. You know, I've seen teenagers who have been through some kind of trauma and things not changing. Teenagers going around, walking around, sucking their thumbs because they lost everything and that felt good. Okay, um, so yes, the, the potential for things going, uh, wrong or bad in that regard are absolutely, uh, real and, and correct. There's also the other side of trying to fix things and telling students, things are okay now. And, uh, it, they're not. And you have to pull back and then there's a re-traumatization. Um, there's not an absolute answer, uh, for this. And I really appreciate how everyone is willing to, you know, open up their gut and, uh, you know, share their concerns. And I'm sure, um, you know, the best answer that, on the epidemiology side, i- is trying to provide information and guidance not to cure a thing. I I don't know how to do that either in this situation. I've seen children die in front of me. Okay, I I I lived with that my whole life. I don't want to see that here in town. I've seen that. Uh, instead, we're, I think what I'm trying to do, and I think I hear you're trying to do is to turn the odds in our favor. Turn the odds in our favor so that there can be more of normalcy. Things that we would really want to to happen. And we're reading through again our frames of reference for what do we think will work because we've been in a situation where we tried that before and is there science to support going down that route? So I I think I'll shut up for tonight. I've I've said more than enough unless there's any questions, but um, as tough as this is and as passionate as people are, you know, bless you for doing the right thing.
Okay, thank you, David. Chris, anyone in the chat? Okay, um, I think uh, that we're at a point where we can move on to directors' comments. I'm actually gonna start tonight. Because we have a meeting next week and it's becoming uh, very apparent to me that uh, this board needs to have a clear handle on the numbers. Um, we need to know how many kids we have, um, what grades they're in and what schools. We need to know um, who their instructors are going to be. We need to know what our para educator loads are. Um, we need to have an understanding of um, what I would refer to as the pods, um, as well as um, how the dynamic with pods and the Monday, Tuesday groupings and the Thursday, Friday uh, groupings work. Um, I'm going to suggest that we need to have um, a report uh, uh, at the building level from principals that uh, will inform us as to uh, what safety precautions um, those principals are taking within their buildings. Um, I think that we bluntly need to have um, an assessment of how well prepared we are with um, PPE gear. And I hear clearly that we um, do not have enough to meet um, optimal um, circumstances. So I think we need to have a clear understanding of just how close or far away from optimal we actually are. So uh, what I'm saying here is I think a large part of what we're going to need to be doing um, next Wednesday, um, are the numbers. Because we're going to need those numbers, I think, um, as boards in order to have a clear understanding of what the next steps are going to be to get these schools um, open um, as close to full time, five days a week as quickly as we possibly can. Um, so um, that's, that's my director's comment. I'm going to call people and ask you uh, for your comment if you're ready. And Molly Bannack, I would like to start with you tonight.
I'm all set tonight. Thank you.
Okay, uh, thank you. Uh, Jason Benson, you're a patient man. Um, I would like to entertain your director's comment or comments.
Thank you, David. Yeah, I find it alarming to see what's going on in the South with this whole COVID situation with these schools that are opening. When the students are massing in the halls and some are wearing masks, some are not, and just seeing how in close proximity they are to each other is certainly counterproductive to what all the health professionals are advising at this point. It will be interesting to see in another month how that plays out for them, but hopefully we have a, as we do have a smaller community. Much smaller school system than down south. I think we're going to fare a lot better in our initial, I'll say, launch at this point. But that is all for now. Thank you.
Hey, uh, thank you, Jason. Jason Terry?
Uh, yeah, I have a comment. Um, you know, David, uh, you mentioned a really good point and I think, uh, Flora, thank you for uh, joining us. It sounds like you have some work to do over the next week to get some numbers together for us. Um, you know, my, I wanted to piggyback on that is, um, you know, hopefully she can find out how many people are uh, going to be taking the bus. Um, you know, the one thing we never talked about with all of that was the uh, the numbers. Really in Vermont, we're talking a lot of national stuff and overseas and, you know, you got to remember that our numbers are still very low here. And I applaud all of us, all of the parents for keeping it that way. Um, Mr. Pratt, um, I've been uh, all over you recently. And um, you know, and but I want to, uh, you know, I want to applaud you tonight. You know, you were talking about the buses and you did the one thing that I've been asking somebody to do is you tried something. And you're, you know, possibly going to try something and it may or may not work, but then you're going to pivot and adjust. And you mentioned that and I think that's huge and it's not going to be easy. It's going to be bumpy. And we have, once we get the schools open, you know, then we can, we can pivot again and we can adjust. Um, you know, I am not going anywhere. Okay? So in fact, uh, I've actually been nominated to be on the negotiation committee for the um, teacher contracts and all that stuff. So I'm definitely here to stay. And I want to figure this out. We all do. We all want what's best for the kids. And so, Mr. Pratt, I have one favor for you, uh, a favor to ask of you. You know, I'm going to put this in your back burner. There's a lot of parents who are very upset about the extracurriculars. And I say extracurriculars because it's affected everybody, but specifically football with seven on seven. And, you know, and I know that wasn't your decision. Um, but I need you to look at what are you going to offer these students who have earned what they have worked hard for? What do we have for these people who have put the time in? We have to do that. And my fear is also because everyone talks about the flu. Basketball is going to be wiped out, all winter sports and all winter extracurriculars are going to be wiped out. A lot of these kids go to school because that's what they have to look forward to. And without sports or extracurriculars, they might not even go to school, period. And that will be a travesty. So I've been giving you a lot of grief lately, Mr. Pratt. I applaud you for adapting a little bit and trying to pivot and you're gonna, I think you're gonna figure this out. And a lot of parents need you to also do that for athletics. So, thank you.
Thank you, Jason. Uh, Lynn Morgan?
I was very thankful for uh, David's comments tonight. It was helpful to hear from the medical side and to get some more specifics. And one thing he mentioned that we had four cases here in Wyndham County, which I have not seen at all in the state reports I've seen. So I, that is worrisome that they're starting to show up so close to home here. And we're not, or at least I wasn't aware of it. Thank you.
Thank you, Lynn. Um, Jessa West Clark?
Thanks. Um, I have so many things to say, but I'll keep it brief. Um, I work, my day job is based, my office is in Hampshire County, Massachusetts, which is seventeen miles from Holyoke, which has been designated a red zone by their state. So I do have the perspective of being in a large university with a lot of students in in a larger town. And I do bring that here. Um, and I have my EMS career on the side, which I also bring here. There is some things, um, Priscilla's right, we do need to look at reconfiguring um, buildings and spaces. Half of grafting kids, just about, if there's twenty-three taking the remote option. Um, that's half our kids and we have six or seven classrooms. And if if Central is seven eighths full and we're half empty, and perhaps we do need to look at um, reconfiguration, which I'm sure Mr. Pratt is doing. And that that goes to Deb's point. I've actually, on a personal level, been encouraging anybody who if you have the means where your kid can learn fully remote, take that option. Um, I think VTVLC is actually a great option, but it also will free up classroom space for kids who really need to be there. Um, because we do have some kids, there's special ed kids who really need to be there. And then there's kids for the social and emotional aspect that that also really need to be in school or away from home. Um, Vermont's numbers are really low. Um, everybody is right about that and it's because we've done a good job. We're fairly rural, although the the current numbers across the US show that rurality is really not helping so much. Um, but we're also good neighbors here. That being said, um, I know families, I know two families that have or will have gone to Florida before the school year starts. I know families that have gone to some very large events. Um, Sturgis just happened and I know someone local who was going to attend that. And they are now tracking down exposures from uh, bar patrons, et cetera. So there is a lot to it. And then the last thing I have, I want to read something closing that someone commented um, to Governor Full Scott. And it said, schools are not babysitters. The real problem we are dealing with is an inequitable economy based on generally no low wages and a lamentable lack of support for families for things like family leave, childcare, help with food insecurity, et cetera. Working parents cannot afford not to work. And they cannot afford not to work and children are caught in the dizzying vortex. And that is completely true. Um, people have relied on schools to be a safe place for their kids to be during the day so they can work. And we need to make it a safe place for them to be. And that's way harder than usual this year. So I commend everybody who's working on it. The Agency of Education, I am very disappointed with. They sent out their new advice on the eleventh of August. Um, which is basically after they told the schools are ready to put out their reopening plans. So like, good job for anybody and everybody who's been working on this and thank you very much.
Thank you, Jessa. Uh, Deb Wright?
So, um, I was concerned that we were turning the meeting into a debate where we had a medical specialist here who kept going back and forth and people kept asking more questions and that's not the point of our meeting. Um, I thought typically that a person like that would be here to provide information and stop. And given us the best information, but going back and forth created a debate which makes the meetings take longer to no particular purpose, especially since no additional information was added after his first um, commentary. Um, also not, I want, we need to stop talking about the rest of the country. Uh, it's not a one size fit, it's all. We are very, very low numbers and the people in Wyndham County who have um, brought COVID in, gotten it from somewhere are not in our school district. That's what's bothering me here. Is we need to change our mentality on this problem. We are operating under a COVID scared mentality instead of a COVID aware mentality. And that mentality is what needs to change for survival. Again, like I've said in previous meetings, COVID's not going to pack up its bags and leave. We need to learn how to deal with it as safely as possible, but then we need to operate our lives. We are not in a bunker situation here. And we need to get out of that mentality. It is causing more problems. We treating every single person we know as a COVID positive on positive person, everyone, even sometimes our family members. If they cough, we're frightened, we're paranoid. That needs to end. We need to be proactive in making changes and I will wait and see if indeed the school will change after the what, two weeks, six weeks, whatever the pro, the process is. Um, and see if we move in a better direction. And yes, with the, it's better, it would be better if some people did full online learning if they can afford to do that. But for people who can't afford to do that, the way the program is set up now, the hyper program does not allow for a parent, for kids who have to be in school more, um, children with, who have, are on IEPs and other at-risk children to say, okay, I can be there four of those five days because you're going to give me Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, Friday. They don't have that option. You've got Group A and you've got Group B. So that plan sounds great, but isn't going to happen the way things are set up currently. That's it. Uh, please be more COVID aware, less COVID scared. Thanks.
Thank you, Deb. Uh, Cheryl Charles?
Hmm, I think building on that, I'd like to be COVID cautious and which is, uh, which is just to be careful, you know, as we move into all of this. Um, my, I'll echo my, my thanks to everyone for, I I think this was unusual, Deb, to have a bit of debate as you use that terminology. And I think in the big picture, it was helpful. I think the intent here was to have all of us get additional information to help inform our thinking, um, because we're all in responsible positions, helping to guide uh, the policy that affects the children and families of of this community that we that we serve. I'd like to, I'd like to summarize a couple of things I've heard and that are based not just on tonight's discussion, but again, all the reading I'm doing and the talking with other people. And that is that I'm thinking of Jason Terry's asking for solutions and I'm going to echo what we're hearing from the Centers for Disease Control, what we're seeing in the state of Vermont, what we're seeing from, hearing from Dr. Fauci. But it's this uh, straightforward that to the extent that everyone wears masks, that we wash hands frequently, that we clean the surfaces as frequently as possible, that we keep physical distance, those things will all help. And then in addition, something that hasn't been said tonight and hasn't been said enough, although I know people are working on it. The extent to which we can have the children outdoors on the grounds and in the neighborhoods for learning. The risks will be reduced, the the, all of that. So they will be safer. And then, you know, around the evidence around what what benefits come from outdoor learning that people tend to be more relaxed, children are able to focus more effectively on even standardized tests. So there are a whole host of benefits, but I'm going to start with reducing the risk from this disease that is in our neighborhoods, even though not yet here. And we may be able to prevent it from being something that affects us all. So we all want to see happy, healthy, flourishing children and families. And I'm going to say staying safe and and taking everything we can outdoors will actually help. So that's it for me for now and look forward to seeing everybody next Wednesday. Thank you.
Thank you, Cheryl. Uh, Priscilla Labbert, you have the last word tonight.
Well, I want to say that I really appreciated that because I really got a lot from hearing the other directors and their comments. I, I agree with basically everything that they've said, every one of them. It's, it's important that we pay attention to this COVID, but it's also important that we educate our children. And it's important that we listen to those, that percentage of parents that really wanted their children there a hundred percent of the time too, which we haven't done. But I know we're trying to work toward, you know, satisfying them a little bit more. We do need to keep in mind, as someone said, that we are here. And I know it was mentioned four new cases in Wyndham County. There are no new cases in in our districts. There are, were two of those. I don't, I did not hear four um, myself. I heard two at Vernon um, through the um, nuclear power plant there. There were two workers there. But that's quite a distance still from us and if we can keep it that, at least that distance away, I'm all for it. Um, colleges party and they also come from all different places and that's why they had, they have a risk. The schools that we heard about in Georgia and down in the south, they had it in their communities and and it was very prevalent. So they had to expect that, especially if the kids are not going to follow protocol and wear the masks. We're going to really push, and I know our educators with their slow opening and their careful opening are going to be able to instill some of that in our students and be able to get that across to them. Uh, we are responsible for educating and that's what we need to keep in mind and where we need to keep, keep working. We are responsible for educating, and that's what we need to keep in mind and what we need to keep keep working towards. That travel at this time of year is kind of something that we want to, hopefully, they will keep out. Hopefully, if they've been to Florida, then they need to quarantine for for two weeks. They should not be coming from travel directly into our schools. And I think that's something we need to keep in mind and be sure that we're checking on as well because that is one of the requirements. The only places you can go in Vermont are in the New England area and some of those blue districts in a few of the other states like Ohio and Virginia, DC, any of those. But you cannot go to Florida and not quarantine for two weeks in anywhere else that they travel outside those areas. The one final thing is that we really need those numbers from Mr. Pratt that David was asking for by Monday so that we can look at them so that we're prepared for our meeting on Wednesday. Because getting them just even that day, we don't have time to to look at them and time to review them and time to be ready to ask the questions that we need to be asking at the meeting. Thanks.
Thank you, Priscilla. Okay, seeing no further business to come before this board tonight, I'm going to declare us adjourned at 8:21. Looking forward to seeing everybody next Wednesday night at 6:30.